Yeah, the only other thing I had, I just wanted to let you know that I'm losing my assistant director.
What?
Yep, he's taking another.
Another?
Another job, so he's gonna be the director of Pass Haven.
Oh, congratulations. I knew that'd take one of you.
Thanks, Brady.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna miss Brady for the job that he's done.
You need to call me for drinks.
So just so you guys know, I'm kinda looking at an assistant director versus talking a little bit about some restructuring. Things we might look at as a public sector.
What did you brought this apart work, so?
Oh, come on.
My talk today is how you're doing on your tax.
The what? Oh, the Trex program, yeah. The Trex program is working, working out great. I, she probably gets tired of me calling because I call her all the time. She say, "What do I need to do and how do I do this?" But I don't have figures right off the top of my head, but we're, it's working out, working out very well. I've been getting some people to call, they're not very happy, but.
Tell them what it is, what the program is.
The what?
Trex program.
Yeah, you guys remember what it is, but it's billing.
But I don't know if everybody by security knows.
So it's basically a program that the state has for any Indiana county, for any debt that they have, you can go through the Trex program. It's, it's not really, it's kinda like a collection agency, I guess, but what they do is any outstanding debt, when they get matches, it takes it off of their state tax returns and pays down that bill. They just kinda stay in that system and bill that, bill that they're paying for.
They don't take it all, it just takes?
Takes whatever, whatever portion. And they have the option of, once they get the notice, they have the option to come in and just taking care of the bill and get it paid off and then they get their back.
More, more pay beforehand than let it go to offset.
And I try to, when they call, I try to go.
Sixty percent pay ahead of time.
Looks worked out well. There's a little headache from England, it's, it's worked out well.
Question?
Yeah, I just, clarification. Did you just vote just to do the auto-load system, or did you vote to do both the remount and the auto-load system?
Vote? Remount and, yeah. I wasn't.
Okay, I brought that up there, 'cause I thought we were doing both.
Yeah, I did too.
Well, I'll make motion that we also need to. We'll set it down, remount. And we have to do that right now, but, cause he said it wouldn't be done until next.
Yep.
At least you can say, "Hey, we're gonna do it."
I can give him the, the go and.
You're just gonna add it into the other motion?
Yeah, I thought it was, 'cause I just said it too close.
I want to develop it, it was just a emergency right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
I might, I might have just thought, for the. I can't tell, I can't tell you the dollar amount for this year, but I can tell you of the debts that he has, has sent in, a third of them have matched and will either come in and pay or give it in offset.
Yeah, I mean, I remember that.
Uh, I just did a lot draw last night, so five, seven, four.
Five hundred and seventy-four, that's the number right there.
Good part, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll miss your work.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Don't forget where you came from, you know, you're from Carol County.
That's right.
Hey Doug, every time you call us for a question, Doug, you make sure.
I kinda feel like Mike Zetschky and Bobby Knight, you know, I get all these guys and I.
Touch them out.
Yeah, crush them out, they go out.
I, I'm just wondering about this deal here. Now, we give them an ambulance and then they steal our guy.
Right, what's up with that?
Hey, it, it blew up, so.
I know it did, but our hearts were right when we gave it to them anyway.
Well, maybe they're trying to finish back if the ambulance blew up on them.
I don't know, we might have to talk to those officials, whether they're stealing our people there.
Well, we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, did you get that barrel removed from the bar?
I did it that day.
Okay.
The day of the meeting, so.
The day after the meeting?
Yep.
That's my stipulation before you can go.
I'm ready for Jerry.
To take that.
Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning. I just wanted to provide an update on the broadband negotiations that we have with Miami Cass R E M C. And I did as well as with the county, we're kinda finalizing the language to make sure that all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed when it comes to how we're gonna execute the economic development agreement with Miami Cass R E M C. So, we don't have, there isn't any updates other than that Ted, I think, has some language that he's given us last week, like, early last week. And so we're trying to make sure we formalize what that looks like in a delivery method to get the, get the agreement executed. So, Ted, do you have any updates on?
No, it's really, we're waiting for the timing on the payments of, of their contract to incorporate into the document with Lake County, or Carroll County. The, the, the one thing that hasn't been talked about since the very beginning, though, is what happens to the money after it comes back to EDC. And there was discussion of a couple percentage of it coming back to Carroll County and there was a discussion of having that go strictly to last mile projects. And so, we're gonna have to have that discussion to know if they would finalize.
And as soon as, I had that proposal ready, I wanted to make sure that the language is finalized in our contract so that you can understand the agreement and then our proposal and then everything, you can look at it whole instead of chopping it up and we get to your contract and then what's happening with the reimbursement dollars and what's happening over the three years and the deployment schedule. So, uh, we, 'cause we just kinda got their deployment schedule last week of how many miles they're gonna build out, when they're gonna build it out, what are we, you know, the checks and balances of, of this agreement. So, my goal was to have it ready, I just wanna make sure that the contract is done with the county so that you guys could review not only our proposal for the reimbursement funds, but also the agreement with the county. So, that's, so Ted's absolutely right.
Yep.
Does that, does that sound fair for a timeline? Just so we have, we have one meeting and we have it all on the table and we're able to discuss the merits of the whole project.
Right, well, we're, when we know what the timetable is for their building, the ring, that, that's when we can finish the, you know, attachments to the agreement with EDC.
Yeah, and we, we just got those, so I think just getting them into the contract and then getting to you guys and then, yeah, I, I would.
What's the timeline, Maryam, anything for?
It depends, their, their attorneys are not the fastest in the world when it gets back to me, so I'm kinda up there mostly, but possibly by the next meeting we would have something to share with you. I'd certainly, I would give it to Ted first so that he could have, take a look at it.
So that, that would be, yeah, both the contract within the county and then the reimbursement piece of it, what, you know, with the last mile fund, our deployment of those. So, yeah, it'll be everything instead of piece, you know.
Good, now I would just want, I'm just curious, just waiting, and then right up through the middle of it, we've got Mulberry Telephone coming up here. How's that all meshed together, or does it not mesh? Does it just happen?
Well, each, each entity's kind of staking their territory, but the, the goal of the ring is really for redundancy of service. So Mulberry would seek to benefit from having this ring, because they could use it for serving their customers from both directions, so having redundancy. So, yeah, the ring is, is principally being built by Miami Cass and operated by Miami Cass, but, but they're both co-ops, they're both nonprofit co-ops. And so, I mean, all intents and purposes, they would work together on making sure that there was the proper feeds for the houses. So, I've, I've been in touch with Greg Mash from the CEO from Mulberry since the inception of floors deal. And, and they're, I mean, they support any deployment of fiber, obviously it's Miami Cass, but they could seek to benefit from, from this going to.
They have to work out contracts together and to move each other's services?
They would have to work that out, but yeah, I mean, I think that, yeah, it, it is competing companies, but competition is okay to some sense in this space because it keeps costs down for consumers and things like that, so, yeah, Bill, it, it, there are competing interests there, but at the end of the day, I think our goal was to get one gig fiber as fast as possible to the community and as efficiently and, and the quality as possible, as much quality as possible. So, I think that this ring going right through Mulberry or near Mulberry's area is only gonna benefit them in the long term, so aim for community.
I have a quick question for the board on the contract. Does it talk about reimbursing the county?
Or reimbursing? Current, the current version with the county doesn't talk about reimbursement, that's, that's something that Ted and I need to.
Okay, okay, 'cause I, I think it should come back to the county. The reimbursement should come back to the ARPA, to the county.
That's something that we're gonna have to talk about, I mean, that's a bigger conversation than just right.
Okay, but it's not in the, this contract that you're talking about is what I was wanting to know.
Correct, it's not, it's not currently in that, but Ted and I are still working on the language.
Okay, and the other thing is, does it talk about? What's the right word here? Coming from county general or?
It goes outside.
My other question is, does it have to go to bid if it's being paid for out of county general?
No, 'cause it's gonna be, we have, we have a contract every two years with EDC. EDC is an open pot corporation. Cities and towns and counties can spend general fund money for economic development activities, services. It's a service contract, so rather than as structuring as a grant where we're granting the money to EDC and they do some kind of sub recipient thing, it is an addendum to, it's gonna be structured as an addendum to the county's contract services agreement with EDC. So we're paying for services and we're paying for services and then the EDC is the one that's contracting with Miami Cass, R E M C. And so it, it doesn't require, since we're not granting, it's not a sub recipient situation, they don't have to follow the rules for procurement. They don't have to take bids or, they don't have to offer this opportunity to any other entity if they choose not to, other than, so. So it's an addendum to the services agreement.
Because they're doing services, 'cause I just remember when they spoke when the lost revenue was being used for broadband then has to be appropriate or a bid, it then has to be bid. So, by doing the EDC, you're, you're.
Yeah.
Kind of going around that.
We're staying away from the, actually staying away from, I mean, the, the addendum, it, it is for broadband, that's different, but we're not using the section of the ARPA statute for broadband, we're not using that, it's, it's all revenue loss.
But the revenue loss is where, where it has to then be bid, I believe.
No, that's not what we revised.
Okay.
Yes, Barnes and Torreberg indicated, when we were trying to, to negotiate this contract.
So it, it just has to be bid in the broadband side of it, not in the lost revenue?
That was, that was, that was.
Well, we're, we're, it doesn't even speak to how the EDC procures service. We're paying for a service, we're adding compensation to that service, there's gonna be a schedule, it's not, it's not gonna be paid out all of the parts, I don't think. We're anticipating that there'll be money upfront and then as they complete the build out, and that's what we don't know, I don't know what.
That's why, that's why group medical might be the better, rather than payroll, two years of group medical is that same amount of money.
Right, yeah.
That's a one-time deal for us as opposed to. This year, I mean, our part, not your part. Payroll is going to be a pain, and I, I'm trying to get around that because that's more work.
Sure.
And headaches and easier to make mistakes, you know, on payroll, and you don't wanna make mistakes on payroll. You just don't wanna do that. But it's not as easy as just taking one month sum and putting it in commissioner's budget and just paying out payroll. It, that money has to come out of all the different county general departments for your audit, for my audit. But I would have to change all those numbers and it still would, it would come out of ARPA, but it, it's just a monster, it's, it's just a pain. And by that group medical, they could do group medical in twenty-three and twenty-four, still hit the commitment by twenty-four.
Right.
And that's within a hundred, within a hundred thousand.
Well, and when we negotiated this, those unintended consequences were, were not anticipated, right? So we wanna, we just wanna work, we wanna get fiber homes.
That's within the hundred, within a hundred thousand.
And as easy and as efficiently as possible.
So if that's seven hundred and fifty thousand, that normally would be put in for the commissioner's budget and then we move it to the fund, insurance fund. But we already did that this year, 'cause I was told to do it in first of January, so if we could do it at budget time for the next two years, in the next two years, it would be good, we're, we'll have to find more.
It would be, it would be a whole lot less seamless than trying to do all of the payroll and much easier for the annual audit.
Well, do I hear that?
Scott, do you understand it?
Yep.
That kind of counts apart, okay. Right, but the more lump sums that you have, the less projects you have to lose.
So it's also easier for the audit trail and saves expenses when the federal audit comes along. If you have one line item for that expenditure as opposed to five hundred line items, it's a whole lot easier and time consuming and annual audits are extremely expensive now.
Can I take your question longer, do payroll on one of those?
Well, no, that, getting it set up with, but what I mean is when I have to do my reporting, I'm gonna have that project every two weeks. And I think doing one month sum, yeah, would be a lot better. And she brought that, the idea.
I, I'm a little confused as to how this conversation is going, so you were talking about making payments, but you're talking about looking at, I think you're not talking about this subject.
No, I'm not talking about that part.
Okay. And did you want to give them a little teaser about the win component of it for the last mile, since they'll be getting an invitation to head to head with me this month?
Yeah, so what about Shoreline Innovation Network, who's been focused on connectivity, broadband, Internet of Things, connecting rural communities, they have some technology that they're, that they're gonna pilot and it's going to be extremely beneficial for our last mile fund to getting communities connected. So the areas that aren't connected with the fiber ring, we could look at sourcing some of their technology to get broadband to those homes that don't have it. So, that way, if there's a area where it's gonna cost X amount of dollars to just get them one piece of fiber for two homes, they have technology that can get that speed to their home without deploying fiber optics down, necessarily down the line and hanging from the poles. So, we've been working with that and we're gonna send out an invitation to the commissioners and the council to look at what that technology can do for us so we can get people connected at the most efficient manner from this broadband ring. So, it is something that's, like I said, it's, they're willing to, to, to use it here in our community for the first tower for free and then if, if the technology works, then we would, we would look to use it with the last mile funds so we can get people connected on where she's been, to council bin, some of the remote areas where there's, there's seven, eight poles that, that one or two homes are on. So, I think that there's a, there's an opportunity for what we're building here in this plan to really de-impact them.
I appreciate everybody's look, yeah, consideration. Well, it's going right over here, but I just, I got a lot of you to deal with.
Well, I just appreciate the consensus around solving the problem and then everybody's collaboration on how we get it funded, how we get it supported. Like, like, to best point, I think the unintended consequences of using ARPA and general fund loss revenue, where's it going from there? But, but I think that we're steadfast on solving the problem for our community and then let's get through the details on how we get that done the right way, so thank you, bye.
Thank you, Jerry.
Your attorney Ted Johnson. You've got a timetable that came from Barney, Farmer, it's undated. Shows the steps to get to the completion of the G O project. At conference with, there was a conference with architect with Rodney Carter-Bergen with Matt Nickerly of Victor Kelly on the twenty-second and what the situation is, the architect was working on, they're, they're taking a, a project that they have done in another state, I think we explained this in the joint game, and they're adapting that to this site. It does change the outer configuration of the building. They, the architect has requested the engineering services to commit to the schedule and the engineering services that are involved are mechanical, electrical, plumbing and also some civil engineering as far as the drives and, and on the outside of the building. They, the drawings that they, they did for this other project are being adapted for this site for one hundred full beds and they will have plans, as soon as they have plans sufficient for putting out the V O T, that's what, that's where, that's the first step is putting out the V O T. The drawings have to be sufficiently complete so that the V O T companies can give the county guaranteed the maximum price, the maximum price. And so, they're putting that together now. V O Ts used to be where, where you solicited V O Ts and taught generally, perceptionally about what you wanted and and let them work out the details, well, the way it's done now is that the, the governmental entity gets the architect, gets the drawings and plans and then the V O T, that's what we're creating, so. So whenever the plans are ready sufficiently to put out the R F P for the deliberate transfer type proposals, that'll be advertised and as soon as those are available, we'll, we'll start the first step of the, of the program.
What kind of a timeline are we looking at?
Don't know, as of last Friday, I talked to Greg, he was, he got commitments from some of the engineering services and he was finishing that, so I think, I mean, pretty soon. But they have to have that information to incorporate in the plans that there's enough, if, there's enough, there's enough detail, there has to be enough detail for V O T operators to give you a closing. That's where we are.
One of our potential V O T operators is back here right now, Mr. Carson Smith, has been very good about attending our meetings and keeping him on what's going on.
And his, his associate has provided me some information forms, but we're gonna, we're gonna, it'll be, what we're doing is gonna be tailored to what, what we're doing, so. And so we're, we appreciate that. One thing that you can be thinking about, we're gonna wanna be ahead of this instead of behind, is there will need to be a building corporation, just like there was gonna be.
I didn't know for what.
Yeah, right, and, and we had three names and we secured, you know, people, like, three people that were gonna serve on the building corporation.
One has passed away.
And one's passed away, so I need again from the commissioners, three names for building corporation so that they can at least be aware of what's going on and then when, when they're needed. They're, they're usually three individuals that are community minded that will drop things at a moment's notice, have a meeting and do what they need to do so that you can keep the project moving. The reason for a building corporation is there'll be a lease because of the obligation will exceed the amount that you can finance without doing a lease, so there'll be a lease involved, in this case, it's gonna be, there's still be a building corporation, but it'll be different than, since the V O T, it'll be a longer term affair actually, a building corporation will probably need to be in existence a longer period of time than would be on traditional lease finance projects, so, you know, and, and, and people don't have to be, you know, you can replace people as they, as there are, resignations or terminations and so forth, so.
I'm reminding people on our building. Well, Jeff, I'm trying to figure who the third one is.
I didn't bring that file, which was George Miller. Oh.
Sorry, my turn. I figured who the third one is.
Jeff.
Jeff Watson?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
So you don't have to have those today and think about that, let me know. That's, that's all I have on the job.
Yeah. I mean, if somebody would like to deal with a building corporation.
Well, we'll have to replace George.
Yeah.
We have to replace the other few also.
It's a non, there's no compensation that catches to it. I guess somebody's name will get on the bond, though, from the secretary, anyway, you know, president.
Okay?
Okay, that's all that. The next item, sort of taking care of a third item, the mortgage and purchasing real estate, this is to finalize the purchase of the four oh five cottage street property, you know, emergency management. The closing, tentatively, is it still, is it gonna be May sixth, do we have, the council meets on May sixth to do the appropriation, additional appropriation?
If it is on May sixth, then I have to talk to Ms. Appel over here, I am not available. So, one of you two guys, I would need to go inside.
Is there a deadline?
I think it's stated in the paper that you had made up of, that, that ordinance for that closing, that is not correct. You just said closing was at May sixth, um, I don't know, I got that here, I was just gonna look to see the silver line.
The time is mentioning in the.
No, and that, that was, you had the thing from Columbia Title that I said, closing agency was going, planning to have it on May the sixth, is what I said. But it does not have a time, so I do not know what time. I don't know what time it.
I suggest that you make it sometime a week following that, because I, I can be back by nine to thirteen, that's a problem, but.
I don't think it's better heard to the following week. In this one, let's make sure. Who did?
I don't think that, I mean, the resolution doesn't mention anything about that.
No, the resolution doesn't.
It says here on the purchase agreement that the closing transaction is extended to or on or before May twenty-fourth.
Yeah, right.
So it can be after the sixth.
I don't mind, just wanted to get his key down there and get in.
Yeah.
So.
The resolution that it's, that's, the resolution is just the document that is needed for them to keep the closing and then the council appropriates the money. Because the, the whole transaction is subject to the council's corporate in the funds, and that's, that's still.
So if you can be here on Friday for that.
I cannot be here on Friday the sixth.
Then, can one of you guys be here to present that to the council or talk with them?
What time?
Sam Rock. That's the one that I came on to get.
Council meeting is on the sixth, fire?
Yeah, they had a special session for that.
We called it special. We called it special, oh, okay. Because we thought that perhaps a closing would be the sixth and we would have to appropriate it prior to the closing.
Well, it was because they wanted to keep it moving. People that are selling wanted to keep it moving or they were gonna put it back on the market also. And every time they did that, we lived the building, same slot, so. It's just.
I could be there.
Awesome.
Is it a necessity? Or that, that a commissioner?
No, but they, they have questions.
Okay.
Well, I think if you get that question, let me try and look at Mike. I think Mike, what's his button?
Well, actually, you shouldn't have any questions. It's either purchase it or not purchase it. I mean, that what goes in and everything else will be determined later.
Right.
For, in the plan. Those two don't come in that way, no. It's already decided.
I'm sure you're tired of walking up, down the steps all the time, back to center, basement, and then, and then, and then. But that's two rooms we can use for more storage. Like we need more storage, we need a lot more storage. I'm gonna make a motion to approve this resolution twenty twenty-two dash O two. For the purchase of the real estate.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash O two. Resolution of the board commissioner of Carroll County, Indiana, authorized and purchased real estate. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Two copies, please.
One for the closing agent and one for the.
Do you have anything else, Frank? That's all I got. Yes, ma'am.
Um, what is the plan for, after the closing of that building? You said something about Mike having the key. What's the move-in plan? Do you have an expenditure plan? What's it gonna cost? What are the telephone, you know, all that kinda stuff? Is there a plan?
Mike, help me out here.
Is Mike in charge of this?
Huh?
Is Mike in charge?
He has been the person who has been the little hustler on going out and buying the buildings and everything for us.
Mm-hmm.
And he's our chief advisor on this whole project.
Uh, so the monthly expenses, the average monthly expenses was emailed out to the council and you guys were carbon copying on the last.
I'm asking about move-in.
The actual moving, there's not gonna be, cause I'm gonna move all my stuff myself. We're not hiring a moving company to do any moving or anything like that. So all, all the P P E and the stuff that I have downstairs is, I'll move with the help of whoever I recruit.
Nobody's looking at me, huh?
No, probably just me, but. Just pull the trailer up to my.
Do you feel ready?
It's move-in ready.
Say again? The building is move-in ready. I know that we've been down there one time since last month. They've really, they've, to save money themselves, they've really turned the heat down. So it is a little cool in there, but, and that, but other than that, it's, we can move in, alls we gotta do is take some artwork off the wall that they left behind. Very, very much, very much in there.
We'll have to convert all the utilities over to our name.
Yeah, we'll have to switch that over, which I, I'll, I'll, the auditor here to figure out how to do that. But like, we're already paying for a phone line from here, so alls we're doing is transferring that phone line, so there's not an additional expense on that. The internet, I've checked with multiple companies and there's a range, it's between, what is it, a hundred and a hundred and thirty a month? But with Frontier, if it's already tied into here, I don't know if it's an additional cost because we're already paying the internet.
Here.
Right. Let's see. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head what the, gas was like one ninety-seven, electric was one forty-eight. City of Delphi was water and sewage and I think that was like eighty dollars a month was the average.
That's just proper minimum fee.
I don't know what the.
We need bucks. Well, and as far as the mortgage, that's something we have to just work on.
That's, that's a future discussion down the line. And that there's a, you know, um, not speaking for the coroner, there's, we do spend a great deal of money going out to county. And if we had something here, it could be a cost savings which would offset the cost of the utilities that we're paying down there. And probably actually save us somewhere on, on end too. But that's always, you know, you don't always have.
Well, at least there's, but she's gonna have kind of an office.
She'll have someplace official now where she can meet those families instead of in the basement or going out and meeting them at the car. And that she can actually sit down and talk with them.
Make it a little first.
Hey, do. So it seems like that building has a lot more space than what E M A and, and the coroner has right now. So have you all made a plan for how that space is gonna be used? How much is gonna be E M A? How much is gonna be coroner? Are there gonna be other departments coming in? I mean, what's the plan?
My personal goal on was to first of all, find a suitable location, because we have two very active parts of county government that are not housed adequately now. So that was my, my first plan of action, is to get a destructible office space and, and work areas. Then work into what all we needed in there. I, myself, would like to see, and I may run into reasons why this won't work, but I'd like to see it be the vote center. Instead of the museum. Uh, there, you know, that's just something we can discuss.
So you don't.
I haven't talked to either one of them about it.
So it sounds like you don't really have a floor plan.
No, we don't have it, no, there's not.
We haven't done finalized.
The first, first, uh, first plan was to get a roof, to get a place, and then we can go into it.
And depends on what happens with the old jail, they might, nine one one might be putting that building too.
And you've talked about that a lot, but we're, we're, but you run into a lot of costs of moving again, so.
Right. Nothing to lose, that happened. It, it's all, our, we wanted to use the building first.
Yeah.
Then Mike, he'll help us with the corner, see how much space they all, both made, and what's left over. It's either gonna be for storage, cause Mike's got stuff everywhere in our county.
Well, and that's kinda, that's kinda my question. You know, Mike's going in, no offense to you, and he's gonna have the key and he's gonna take a whole bunch of space maybe. I don't know. But then maybe when somebody else, you know, you decide somebody else is gonna go in, he's gonna have to, you know, do something or scrunch or, I, I don't know. I just wondered if you had a plan.
I'm not, I'm not real concerned about that because we've had such a good working relationship so far.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't see that there's gonna be a problem on, hey, what can we do about this? And, and working together on getting it solved. I mean, um, we have talked about using grants money to maybe perhaps put up a, a warehouse building on that site too. For his truckers and all those things to go with it.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is actionable on here. Harvey?
Or the care's money, or building for his equipment that we bought with, the care's.
Right. So the next one is again, she's gonna need equipment stuff after she gets down, because she hasn't approved it for, I mean, I mean, best we have so far this year.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And if they're at night, we gotta pay a charge just from the unlock it for the guy to come in. That's almost, what, forty bucks? Around forty dollars each time? I mean, we're wasting a lot of money just for them to come and give us a key to open the door. So we can store the body, plus the cost of the fuel.
Door to what?
To, to, to store our bodies for, for the deceased.
Whoa, I know, but where are they being stored now?
All over where? Anywhere's got space, that's what, I mean, everybody's running out of space.
That's what I was thinking. I don't understand the key, but, you know.
Most of the.
They're locked down.
No. I'm not gonna talk for you, go.
I, I don't know what you say.
Huh?
What was your question?
Where, where, most of where are we storing most of the time?
Most of the time we're storing in White County, but they have high numbers also, so we've ended up having to last minute figure out where to go to, to New County or we have to call different places.
Yeah, I called around and they're all having that problem, yeah.
How much capacity does Black County have?
How much what?
Capacity, how many bodies?
Three.
Three?
So if we get a cooler on six or eight, we'd be open around the counties and we could get some more money.
And that's Cass County having?
Cass only has two.
Eight.
They, theirs was the.
There's that at the hospital.
Like they've never offered up to let us store there. Yeah.
I don't know how equal it is, but I know I've bought a lot of twenty walk-in coolers in my time. Going bigger is not that much more expensive than small. So as you're talking about going to, having capacity for eight, we're gonna cost four anymore than three.
Three. Yeah, cause one, one section was the.
Right. On average, the, the research that we've been doing on the, the coolers, depending on which way we go and how the grants can roll. And of course, grants are not always guaranteed. A walk-in cooler that could house up to twelve. Still have to buy the racks and stuff like that, I can't remember the cost off the top of my head, but looking at the average cost, that was about a hundred and ninety a month to keep that, to run that. The individual coolers that are like the three slot coolers, um, the cost was a little low, but we didn't have to do any special wiring with those, we could say ran off of them. The one decent thing about that building down there, it is three-phase. So we, we got some play with that. And then there's some other things that we have to, she'll have to discuss with you guys on placement. Especially when we're going for the grant lines and that, if, if you really wanna place the, the more down there. Based on some of our experiences in the last six, seven months.
I just saw a cooler go at auction last, we were, they were playing big enough to call. With seventeen dollars.
That is her.
We had, we would have to come in.
Right. You have to come in, disassemble it, move it.
Move it and have some, you know.
Raise some of that.
Air conditioning cooling guy, hook all the three online and all that stuff. But I mean, it was, I'm not talking about some old rat trap, this thing was nice. And I looked at it and kind of rubbed my hands together and I didn't wanna get into it, I have so many problems with it, so.
And as you know too, sir, every time you move one of those coolers, you, you start having problems with seals. So one of those, you'd have to look at how many times it's been moved.
Yeah, this one had only been built in that spot.
Martin Ross cooler came from the army, it's a bust.
Yeah.
Right.
It came from Wright-Byrderson Air Force Base.
Right. I don't know, would you do that again or not?
We can do some luck into it, they're, they're hard to come.